Are now opening up our board meeting and thank you so much to our viewing audience. We want to call our special board meeting to order and I am going to ask Dr. Wyatt, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
It would be my honor and privilege, Madam President. Let me make sure I stand.
Thank you, likewise.
Alrighty folks, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance. To the flag. For which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And 1.3 approval of agenda.
So move.
Second. It's been moved and second, is there any discussion? If not, we will take the vote. Dr. Flores? Aye. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Rosas Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo? Don't see him. And Gwen Rogers, I motion carry. Thank you so much. We're at 3.0 board study and discussion, 3.1 Proposition 15 study and discussion. And we are here tonight on board. You should have been given some information to review, to analyze for our discussion tonight. This was moved to a special board meeting because we definitely want to stay in compliance and we know that we have a board policy that were called to our, that was called to our attention to ensure that we have a formal discussion and our viewing audience as well as our community have an opportunity to weigh in. I'm sure there's been some public comments and we held some from the previous meetings. So I believe at this time, Ms. Cunningham, is this where we're going to?
This is it.
This is where we're going to have our?
Public comments.
Public comments. Thank you so much. If you'll be so kind to read those.
Okay, we've got about 24 total from last time and this time. So bear with me as I read them all. Some of them are fairly long.
Absolutely.
Okay, the first one is from Nancy Glenn. "I am a 31-year employee of SBCUSD. I have been through a great deal in getting full funding for public education, from budget cuts to overcrowded classrooms, to QEIA, where we got well-deserved funding for smaller class sizes. I've seen it all. We now have a chance to help fund public education by passing Prop 15 on November 3rd. Prop 15 will close the 40-year-old loophole that enables large corporations to pay their property taxes at the 1978 rate, corporations like Disney, Chase Bank, and Chevron. For those years, property owners like you and me pick up their slack and pay our taxes at the 2020 rate. Frankly, I'm tired of it, but I'm even more tired of seeing my students, who deserve the best of everything a public education has to offer, not get what they deserve: access to technology, smaller class sizes, art and music classes taught by highly competent art and music teachers, and much more. Prop 15 will not only help fund education, but will also fund our San Bernardino community by providing funding to first responders, fire companies, and infrastructure. I urge you tonight to support the Yes on 15 campaign and urge our SBCUSD community to vote yes on 15." The next one is from an anonymous submitting a public comment in support of the school district to prioritize our schools and communities first by voting yes on 15. This one's from Nikki Detman. She's a community member. "My name is Nikki Detman. I am the voter service chair for the League of Women Voters San Bernardino. My comments tonight are regarding Prop 15 and my hope that the board will support putting schools and communities first and putting $20 to $35 million in our school district coffers. Most of us want similar things: good schools for our children, a healthy family, and safe neighborhoods. But for nearly four decades, big corporations have not been paying their fair share, leaving California with the most overcrowded and under-resourced classrooms in the U.S. and with some of the worst ratios of counselors, librarians, and nurses per student. The Schools and Community First Initiative, Prop 15, ensures that our schools and communities come first with the resources to educate all our kids and the services to support all our families. It closes commercial property tax loopholes, benefiting a fraction of corporations and wealthy investors without affecting homeowners or renters, and reclaims over $12 billion per year for K-12 schools, community colleges, and local communities. This would mean anywhere from $20 to $35 million for SBCUSD. Imagine what that could do for our students. Proposition 15 invests in education, in educating all our kids and in the vital services necessary to support our families and communities. It also ensures strict accountability so that money goes directly to our students. San Bernardino Community College District, which is an important and critical partner with SBCUSD in ensuring an educated college and career-ready community, has already supported Proposition 15. For these reasons, I strongly recommend the board adopt the resolution to support Prop 15." The next one's from James Albert, community member. "I am, I am, I am Yes on 15 Chapter Coordinator for the League of Women Voters of the San Bernardino area. My comments are in full support of Prop 15 and my hope that the board will prioritize our schools and communities first. If we pass Prop 15, San Bernardino USD is projected to receive $20 to $35 million in our school district budget per year. Most of us want similar things: good schools for our children, a healthy family, and safe neighborhoods. But for nearly four decades, big corporations have not been paying their fair share, leaving California with the most overcrowded and under-resourced classrooms in the U.S. and with some of the worst ratios of counselors, librarians, and nurses per student. The Schools and Communities First Initiative, Prop 15, ensures that our schools and communities come first with the resources to educate all our kids and the services to support all our families. It closes commercial property tax loopholes, benefiting a fraction of corporations and wealthy investors without affecting homeowners or renters, and reclaims over $12 billion per year for K-12 schools, community colleges, and local communities. Imagine what that could do for our students. Prop 15 invests in educating all our kids and in the vital services necessary to support our families and communities. It also ensures strict accountability so that money goes directly to our students. San Bernardino Community College District, which is an important and critical partner with SBCUSD in ensuring an educated college and career-ready community, has already supported Prop 15. For these reasons, I strongly recommend the board adopt the resolution to support Prop 15 and help us get the word out to San Bernardino USD voters by November 3rd. It should be stated that the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District supports Prop 15 as well. Thank you." The next one's from Cindy Nemeczek. She's an educator in San Bernardino County. "I am a teacher librarian at a large public high school in San Bernardino County. Today I ask you if you are serious about college and career readiness for our kids, join the San Bernardino Community College District in supporting Prop 15. For too long, a loophole in tax law allowed California's big corporations to duck out on their obligations, leaving California with one of the lowest per pupil spending ratios in the U.S. The Schools and Communities First Initiative, Prop 15, ensures that schools and communities here in San Bernardino County will receive tens of millions of desperately needed dollars, just as we are about to face devastating budget cuts. Not only that, but this funding will be sustaining, continuing on through an economic downturn that could take years to recover from. Please, please support a measure that funds our schools and families by simply and fairly closing a commercial property loophole, benefiting a fraction of corporations and wealthy investors. This loophole never should have been there in the first place, and removing it will not affect homeowners or renters despite what opponents claim. Proposition 15 will reclaim over $12 billion per year for K-12 schools, community colleges, and local communities. This would mean anywhere from $20 to $35 million for SBCUSD. Imagine what that could do for our students. Perhaps you have children in private schools who enjoy smaller class sizes and special services, but why condemn every other school child in this county and state to underfunded schools over the coming years when we don't have to? Why would we not want to invest in educating all our kids? Why not invest in the vital services necessary to support our families and communities when the benefits of a lifetime lifeline during such uncertain times far outweigh the cost to the few large corporations who will finally pay their fair share? This money goes directly to our students. If you support the future of not just your city, but this entire county, you will make sure education has a transparent, accountable funding source for years to come. For these reasons, I strongly recommend the board adopt the resolution to support Prop 15." This is from Marvin Norman. He's a county community member. "The support of the district for Prop 15 would be a net benefit to the students and ultimately the entire community." This is from Trevon Martin, a community member. "In my previous role with the California School Boards Association, I worked closely on the Schools and Communities First Initiative. This initiative would provide billions of dollars for education in California that has been underfunded for years. I urged, I urged your support then and I continue to do so today. I thank you in advance for joining other school districts and educational partners by voting yes tonight." Next one's from Shirley Harland, a community member. "I'm a member of the League of Women Voters San Bernardino. I hope that the board will support Prop 15, putting schools and communities first and putting $20 to $35 million in our school district. For nearly four decades, big corporations have not been paying their fair share, leaving California with the most overcrowded and under-resourced classrooms in the U.S. The Schools and Communities First Initiative, Prop 15, ensures that our schools and communities come first with the resources to educate all our kids and the services to support all our families. It closes commercial property tax loopholes, benefiting a fraction of corporations and wealthy investors without affecting homeowners or renters, and reclaims over $12 billion per year for K-12 schools, community colleges, and local communities. This would mean anywhere from $20 to $35 million for SBCUSD. It also ensures strict accountability so that money goes directly to our students. San Bernardino Community College, which is an important and critical partner with SBCUSD in ensuring an educated college and career-ready community, has already supported Prop 15. For these reasons, I strongly recommend the board adopt the resolution to support Prop 15." Okay, that's it for the last board meeting. These are now the ones that came in today. The first one's from Jorge Peredia, a community member. "Our schools need the potential revenue that will come from a yes on Proposition 15. Prop 15 closes the tax loophole that wealthy corporations use to evade taxes, which in turn has hurt our students. Prop 15 will not affect homeowners and will actually benefit small businesses by helping to level the playing field. Our schools and communities need to support Prop 15." Next one's from Susan Carl. She's a community member. "SBCUSD must support a yes vote on Prop 15. A no vote puts the needs of big businesses, out-of-state corporations, and absentee landlords ahead of the needs of your students, who are, who already live in one of the most economically depressed cities in the county. A no vote would be essentially selling residents and taxpayers down the river in favor of corporate campaign donations. Anything less than support by SBCUSD Board for a yes on Prop 15 is unacceptable." This one is from Jill Casalacos Long. I don't think I read that right. "Proposition 15 specifically preserves the Prop 13 protections for all residential properties. Its purpose is to close an unintended loophole that allows huge corporations to pay property taxes based on 1970's property values for generations, while residents' property gets reassessed whenever it changes hands. Corporations don't change hands. Disney's board will stay, will still be Disney's board long after everyone who is currently on that board has died. So Disney never changes hands. Proposition 15 requires commercial and industrial properties, except those zoned as residential, like apartment houses or commercial agriculture, to be taxed based on their market value rather than their purchase price. It is not fair that Disneyland pays lower property taxes than I do. I urge you to vote to support Proposition 15." This is an anonymous comment. Excuse me. "I would like to remind Mr. Gallo and Mr. Wyatt that they were elected by the community, by the community to serve the students in San Bernardino and not their special interest or the Republican Party. Vote yes on supporting the resolution on Prop 15." Next, we have David Friedman, a community member. "I believe San Bernardino USD should support Prop 15. I own a large concentration of commercial property in downtown San Bernardino, including a coffee boba, boba shop called Viva La Boba. I believe this proposition will improve San Bernardino for several reasons. As San Bernardino becomes a hotspot for industrial development, our cities will see decreased sales tax revenue as large companies take up available land to build more warehousing. These large companies should pay a fair amount of property tax to support the cities that they operate within. Commercial developers will build more housing in an attempt to avoid this tax on commercial property. San Bernardino has lower property values than major cities like Los Angeles and San Francisco. More investment capital will move into San Bernardino as people try to avoid being taxed higher. The second benefit for investors is that all of San Bernardino is an opportunity zone. When they sell off their expensive property in LA and look to reinvest, they will look for places like San Bernardino. Schools need more capital to invest in our youth. San Bernardino, more than many cities, needs an educated workforce to invest and live in our cities, in our city for decades to come." From Latisha Ochoa, she's a member of the California Alliance for Retired Americans. "Good evening, board members. Thank you for your time today. Please support Proposition 15, schools and communities first. With the passing of this proposition, much-needed fun, much-needed funding for our San Bernardino schools would provide additional resources to help us during this COVID-19 pandemic. We need to get everyone's children back in school safely and equip our teachers with much-needed equipment, technology, and everything they need to get our students educated to meet the challenges of today. This proposition will bring funds to our schools every year. These monies would help with providing school counselors, nurses, and technology in each school. Children need an opportunity to learn about the arts, music, and special education programs. This proposition would reclaim at least $36 million a year for San Bernardino County, San Bernardino City Unified School District. I was born and raised in San Bernardino. I walked to Mount Vernon Elementary School when I was a child. We must not let the talents of our students go undiscovered because of lack of funds. Thank you for your time." Give me one second to take a drink of water, please. Thank you. This one's from Susan Longville, a community member. "Valley District takes position of support for Prop 15. Ballot initiative could bring much-needed funding to the region. At its board meeting on October 6, 2020, the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District Board of Directors voted 3 to 2 in support of Prop 15, the Schools and Communities First ballot initiative. Prop 15 would tax most, would tax most commercial and industrial properties in California based on their market value rather than their purchase price, raising additional local tax revenues for schools and local governments. The ballot initiative had been discussed at a Board of Directors' workshop earlier this year, providing the directors with an overview of what its passage could mean. At the urging of former Board President Susan Longville, the full board took the matter up at its meeting today, which would be October 6, and surprised those in attendance via Zoom that the Board of Directors would take a formal position of support. The arguments in support of Prop 15 swayed me, commented Valley District Board President T. Milford Harrison. After the discussion and perspectives provided, I feel confident that the Schools and Communities First Initiative will not harm small businesses, business owners, or residential homeowners. In fact, this initiative has the potential to relieve future pressure on our current residential taxpayers, as it could provide us with a new source of revenue. The statewide ballot initiative seeks to change some provisions of California's landmark 1978 property tax limitations. Schools and Communities First is the first qualifying initiative that would make changes to Prop 13 in over 40 years. If approved on the November ballot, it would raise additional local tax revenue for schools and local governments by changing how assessed values are determined for commercial and industrial properties. As proposed, it does not affect the value assessment of residential, agricultural, or small business properties. This type of ballot initiative is often referred to as split role, because it would split how commercial properties are taxed from how residential, agricultural, and small business, business properties are taxed. There is potential for Valley District to collect additional revenues of $1.5 million to the general fund and $14.6 million to the state water project fund if this ballot initiative passes. If approved, this funding would be used to help Valley District position itself to continue providing reliable supplemental water supply for the nearly 700,000 people throughout the region. If the voters of California approve Prop 15, it would, it would restore equity to Valley District's ratepayers by ensuring that all private property owners pay their fair share, commented Director Longville. In the years since Prop 13 passed in 1978, residential property tax revenue has increased from 55% to 72% relative to commercial tax value. That means homeowners today are carrying an unfair burden because commercial property owners are not. The burden of Prop 15 will fall on the state's largest corporations and highest-value properties, with average commercial properties experiencing minimal, if any, rent increases. As noted in a Prop 15 economic analysis by Beacon Economics, 90% of the additional property tax will come from just 10% of the high-value properties. The money collected through the tax would stay within the counties and not go to Sacramento and into the state general fund. The notion of keeping local dollars local is typified in Prop 15, stated Harrison. Additionally, learning that our neighboring water districts are taking positions of support further affirms that Prop 15 is good for our community." President Harrison, Division 4, and Director Longville, Division 3, and Director Navarro, Division 2, supported the, supported the support position of Prop 15. Director Hayes, Division 1, and Director Keelhold, Division 5, opposed. Next one's from an anonymous. "Our schools and communities are dying. We are facing a budget crisis of historic proportion. We have been underfunded since 1978 and it is only getting worse. Our schools are falling apart, some literally. This proposition will undo the worst part, but not all, of Prop 13. Disney California is on land being charged the 1978 property taxes it did when it was a parking lot. That is not fair. 72% of property taxes are being paid by homeowners. That is not right. It is not fair to new businesses who have to pay the current tax rates when they begin. They are already on uneven footing with anyone who has been in business for decades. California is currently the only state allowing this uneven taxation." Businesses aren't going to do, hold on, businesses aren't going to do an expensive move to another state, one without our resources, to go to a state that doesn't offer the tax break they have enjoyed all of this time. New businesses will be on even ground. Businesses have increasingly raised prices to match and surpass the cost of living increases without having to increase their own costs. They will not do more than the market will allow, and paying fair share of property taxes in every other state has not destroyed businesses there. Homeowners will not see an increase. It is explicitly stated. Residential property, small businesses, and farms will not see a tax increase from this proposition. It is, it is scare tactics, tactics, and slippery slope arguments that fuel this debate, not fact. This is not the time to cut resources to our essential workers, local services, or schools. Those are the people we most need now, and we cannot expect them to face more cuts. California needs to rebuild to the infrastructure and model state we were before large corporations stopped paying what every single one of us pays on our own property. Very few California taxpayers will even be affected by this, and it will raise $12 billion a year for local services. That is how much they have been avoiding for decades. Imagine the schools we could have if we still funded at the rate we did then. We can't afford corporate welfare at the expense of our communities any longer. Support Prop 15, right the wrong." Christian Shaughnessy, a community member. "Prop 15 would fund schools and our cities more, and this board should 100% support it. The wealthy have made so much money in the middle of this pandemic and are already suffering. Children should not have to suffer anymore. Our children's lives matter more than the riches profits. Support Prop 15." From Deborah Albert, a community member. "As a small business owner in the travel industry, which has been hit hardest by COVID-19, I have been frustrated by congressional inaction to come up with a stimulus, stimulus package to revive our local economy. Our social safety net was ill-prepared to meet the needs of my immediate situation. It has led to undue stress and anxiety for my family, clientele, and me. It's a responsibility of our elected leaders from the local level, Governor Newsom and California voters, to come up with a reasonable solution to generate millions of dollars for our schools and local services that face impending cuts if we refuse to act. Having lived in California pre-1978 and being fully aware of the deceptive intentions of Howard Jarvis, which has largely benefited the largest and most powerful corporations over the course of the last 42 years, I was proud to cast my mail ballot in support of Prop 15. Support my fellow small business owners and help us rein in the unchecked power of corporate America." From Robert Albert, a community member. "As a former first-student bus driver that serviced the SBCUSD, I have seen firsthand how the school district has had to make questionable decisions with limited resources. In 2010, based on a controversial board decision that transferred the contract from First Student to Durham, I lost my union job without even a letter of explanation or response from my union to which I was a dues-paying member. I was excited to cast my voting ballot via mail in support of Prop 15 to generate millions of dollars to our school district annually. It is my hope that our elected school board members, once Prop 15 is passed and phased in, will prioritize the support system our students, teachers, and classified staff need to thrive in our city. I am united against corporate greed and putting our schools and communities first." From Sean M. Haukewell, a community member. "With Proposition 13, when Proposition 13 was passed into law, it was supported by voters across the political spectrum. It still is a popular measure in that it has provided some protection for homeowners and renters from increases in property tax in a coastal state with a pleasant climate and in pre-seen property values. Decades later, we see that Proposition 13 has been twisted and abused so that there are two sets of rules: one for residents and quite another for corporations. Prop 13 was sold as a way of protecting homeowners, but as homes are sold and reassessed with a resulting increase in tax rates, working families have had to shoulder more and more of the burden. On the other hand, some of the wealthiest, most profitable corporations are exploiting legal loopholes to maintain scantily low tax rates from the 1970s. This is true, even though the properties have been sold again and again, thanks to the notion of corporate personhood and other tax code shenanigans. It is an unfair system that favors huge multinational corporations over the interests of communities and schools. Passing Proposition 15 will correct this injustice and make these corporations pay their fair share in taxes. Every time an attempt is made to inject fairness into our broken system of property tax assessment, the corporations dig into their deep pockets and throw tens of millions of dollars into deceptive campaigns meant to scare homeowners. Imagine if they instead use that money to solve local problems and fund schools. Under Prop 15, homeowners will continue to enjoy the protections of current law. Contrary to the lies spread by the opponents of Prop 15, there is absolutely no plan to take protections away from homeowners. They will continue to pay taxes based on the property assessment on the day they purchased it. In fact, agricultural land and small businesses run out of the, run out of the home are exempt from the changes in the law, and taxes will actually go down on business equipment. By refusing to pay their fair share of taxes on their properties, corporations have refused to invest in the communities, refused to educate the students who will become their employees, refused to maintain the roads that their trucks rumble down, refused to provide for the health of the communities, even when their commercial activities pollute the air." even when their commercial activities pollute the air and water. It's time for these corporations to be a part of the communities and to stop their obsessive, single-minded pursuit of the maximum rates of return for their greedy shareholders and invest little money in their immediate stakeholders, their employees, their customers, and the people of the surrounding communities.
Jared, can you mention some of the ones that are against Prop 15?
Yeah, that was one of the last ones that was submitted. I'm writing, reading these in order of submission, so they will, so.
I'm just joking, I'm just joking.
Oh, okay, thank you, all right, but I am reading them in order. Okay, the next one is from Eric Schmidt. He's a concerned small business owner. As the Vice President of Legislative Affairs of the California Small Business Association, Board of Directors, and the President of Ex-Exquadrum Incorporated, a small aerospace and defense contractor in the county, I urge the San Bernardino City Unified School District to say no to Proposition 15. Prop 15 will be the largest annual property tax increase in California history. This proposition will be especially harmful to small business owners since the majority rent space for their business and an increase in property tax means an increase in rental prices. With many small businesses still struggling to survive after the numerous shutdowns, an increase in rent would be devastating to small business owners who are simply trying to remain open. If this is passed, many small businesses will be forced to increase the price of goods or services to remain, excuse me, remain open, and this will present and as an even larger challenge for senior citizens and low-income neighborhoods. Vote no on Prop 15 so small businesses can focus on rebuilding their businesses and not on paying a new inflated rental price. Please join us and hundreds of other organizations to stand against Prop 15. Here are just a few that, that are urging a no vote on Prop 15. American Indian Chamber of Commerce of California, American Legion Department of California, Black Business Association, Black Small Business Association of California, California Assisted Living Association, California Black Chamber of Commerce, California Building Industry Association, California Chamber of Commerce, California Downtown Association, California Farm Bureau Federation, California Fresh Fruit Association, California Growers Association, California Hispanic Chambers of Commerce, California Manufacturers and Technology Association, California Rental Housing Association, California Small Business Association, California State Conference of the NAACP, California Taxpayers Association, California Tribal Business Alliance, California Veterans Chamber of Commerce, California Women for Agriculture, California Women's Leadership Association, Coalition of Small and Disabled Veteran Businesses, Disabled American Veterans Department of California, Family Business Association of California, Latin American and Caribbean Business Chamber of Commerce, Latin Business Association, Latino Community Development Association, National Taxpayers Association, and hundreds more. On behalf of taxpayers and small businesses, I urge you to vote no on Prop 15. This one's from Ashley B. DeSacala, the President of San Bernardino Teachers Association. I am speaking in support of the resolution on Prop 15, the Schools and Communities First Act. These are the facts about Prop 15. If passed, it creates a split role where commercial and residential property are treated differently. Current residential and agricultural properties are exempted and will have no change to their property taxes and will continue to be protected by Prop 13. Only large commercial properties valued over $3 million will be reassessed every three years. The vast majority of commercial property in California would not be impacted by Prop 15 as it is, as it is already being reassessed at current market value. Prop 15 will bring much-needed additional funds to school and communities that have over the past 40 years taken the brunt of the state budget cuts and continue to bleed out. These funds, which for our district would be a total of $38 million, would allow us to provide our schools with critically needed resources during this pandemic as well as give our local community desperately needed funds to provide the resources to respond to emergencies like the wildfires ravaging our state. Prop 15 also includes strict transparency and accountability for these funds by requiring public disclosure of all revenues and how they are spent as decided by the local school district and communities. California has the fifth-largest economy in the world, but ranks 41st in per-people education funding and dead last in teacher-to-student ratio. We currently have the opportunity to change this narrative on November 3rd by voting to approve Prop 15. I seriously urge the board to support this resolution as it would finally help return our schools to being among the best-funded in the nation. This is from Christina M. Marquez. She is a San Bernardino resident, elementary teacher, SBTA member, CTA member, political activist, and taxpayer. I am voting yes on Prop 15. Why? Before 1978, corporate landowners paid roughly 2/3 of California state property taxes. Homeowners were paying about 1/3 of the taxes. When Prop 13 passed, homeowners were saddled with paying 2/3 of the state property taxes, and corporations are, were now only responsible for paying 1/3 of those taxes. What a gift. Corporate property owners now had a ginormous permanent property tax cut. Of course, the state suffered when the budget was cut in half by $7 billion the very next day after its passage. Some corporations just sit on their vacant properties with blighted buildings while paying rock-bottom taxes on them. They pay pennies in taxes per square foot and watch their land values appreciate while investing nothing in improving these properties. We're all too familiar with the many vacant properties and buildings here in our city and across our state. Corporations could have changed more for, could have charged more for goods and services to pay off their higher taxes. Homeowners can't give themselves salary increases or bonuses in order to pay higher taxes, but yet that is where we are. We have to raise sales taxes and pass bond measures to make up some of the lost tax revenue. Proposition 15 is a much-needed fix for our budgetary problems. Let's cut through the propaganda and set the record straight. Corporate and residential properties should not be taxed exactly the same way. Prop 15 would end the legal sleight-of-hand corporations use, selling off bits of land to a network of shell corporations. According to current rules, these businesses only have to make sure that no corporate partners have more than 50% control. This way, they avoid reassessment because since the corporation is listed as the owner, there would be no change in property ownership, even when the corporation and all of its properties have been bought and sold many times. Therefore, there would be no higher taxes for these corporations. This is a scam and a sham, and it needs to be fixed. Prop 15 would raise property tax rates for commercial and industrial properties valued at over $3 million. The state is still losing roughly $10 billion a year just from corporate properties such as BSNF Railway, which is one of the largest freight lines in North America. Yes, you see their trains, their trains not just here in San Bernardino, but all over the state. Ever think about who owns all the land these rails are laid upon? The Irvine Company, which is a real estate development company, is solely owned by Donald Brand, whose net worth is reported to be $17 billion. Disney's 1.8 million-square-foot headquarters in Burbank, California is taxed at approximately $5.60 per square foot. Others in the vicinity are taxed at $150 to $200 per square foot. Chevron, a big oil corporation, is funneling its dollars through smaller political action committees, trying to keep their name off of the donor lists of being against Prop 15. The Trump National Golf Club of Los Angeles on the Palos Verdes Peninsula, estimated worth $264 million. How much tax revenue would that bring in when Prop 15 is passed? Vote yes on, vote yes on Prop 15. Our schools and community, communities should be our foremost priorities. And our last one is from Nick Sablon, a community member. Prop 15 will provide San Bernardino schools with much-needed funding. I work at North Park Elementary's CAPS after-school program, so I see how much our community schools would benefit from this initiative. I urge the school board to stand with administrators, educators, students, and staff like myself in supporting Prop 15. And that is all the public comments, President Rogers.
We get off mute. Thank you so much, Ms. Cunningham. And okay, board, we have heard all of our public comments, and now is the time for our discussion. You were provided voter information guide, information from the Secretary of State on all of the rebuttals as well as the proposed. So I, I move to support, and then we can have discussion if there's a second.
I second it.
I, okay, so let me, I probably should then be at an action item. Right, because 4.1 is where the action will take place. So we've heard our discussions, and I'll be, then I will call for 4.0, 4.1, which is the proposition action. And I have a motion on the floor and a second. All right, and I will go ahead and open it up for discussion.
Well, I'll just say that as you see with the public comments, I have a lot of notes, but I think they've already said most of it. The reality is, is that it is a split role, and it will separate. And as many of you might have seen, it, there's a lot of deceitful misinformation regarding homeowners being impacted, small business owners being impacted, which is not true. If you have 50 employees or less, you will not be impacted. If you have 500,000 or less, and this is language that can be found in nonpartisan groups, like for instance, the LOA, the Legislative Analyst Office as well, because I like to look at making sure we're getting the correct language itself. And then even small businesses with property of 500,000 or less will not be paying additional taxes on those. Actually, they wouldn't be paying property taxes on that aspect. So I am in full support, and I am, I, as you can see with the public comments, there's many community members, many residents here that are also full support, small businesses that are in full support, and, and so I definitely vote yes.
Thank you, Ms. Madina. Dr. Flores.
I also support Proposition 15. Education, investing in education, in our educators will enhance and benefit our community, our economic security in our city, which is really important. And like all the commentaries that the public has made, they were very, very, how would I say, cogent in terms of, of their support. And it is time that we begin to invest. I went through school in the 1950s, elementary, and we had libraries, we had books, we, I mean, I got a stellar education, and it was because we were fully funded. So I am in totally support of this proposition from our board.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Mr. Gallo.
Yes, let me make sure I'm off of mute, I think so.
Yes.
My apprehension on this is that so many small business associations have come out dead-set against this, and ones that were, quite frankly, very surprising, you know, from Hispanic Chamber, Black Chamber, farm workers, et cetera. And I'm also, by the way, a huge advocate in public school funding. You know, I think it's, it's important that the state prioritize their expenditures for, for schools, fully fund our schools. So I, it's, it's not an issue with me about, about funding. It's an issue with me about the priorities that the state have chosen to fund in lieu of our schools, as was promised, you know, with, you know, our lotteries, et cetera, et cetera. And so, you know, when you, when you start looking at the organizations that were cited against this, they give, they articulate some very alarming statistics in there. And in fact, one of them was CalPERS, and CalPERS, to my knowledge, I don't know that they've come out for or against this proposition, but they acknowledge that commercial properties are going to see a 5% to 7% reduction in property value if Prop 15 is passed. Impacts CalPERS because they invest heavily in, in commercial properties as well. You know, again, I hear the people saying small business won't, won't be affected and things, but you look at a small business that owns property, and $3 million is not exactly a lot, a huge property value. If you own any property at all, $3 million is still a very small business for, for property. It, it sounds like a lot for San Bernardino, but, but it sure isn't. And, you know, I, I just would rather California figure out a way to take their already billions and billions of dollars that they are already raising in tax dollars and prioritize it for our schools. I'd be absolutely in favor of that in, in looking at that. And quite frankly, our economy is based on small business. When I see, you know, all of these small business organizations against it, it just raises the alarm bells. You know, I know what they do, I know what they've gone through, small businesses especially in this COVID environment. And why would all of them be, all of these organizations, and literally there's over 500 on, on the list that have come out against this in the state of California? Why would all of them be united and, and coming against Prop 15? You know, and it's, to me, it's just another slippery slope to go on after Prop 13 anyway. But, oh, that's speculation, that's, I don't think we could ever feed the entire appetite that the state has for, for our tax dollars. But when I look at our building career pathways, and I've heard a couple of public comments on the importance of building that. And then I look at the internship programs that we initiated at San Bernardino City Unified. And many, you know, we've had hundreds of these small businesses step up to give internships to our, to our students in San Bernardino City Unified. And those are our local small businesses. And so I'm, I'm just concerned about that. I, I'm, I'm torn because I really believe we need to fund public education for all of the reasons we cite, and, and quite frankly, the great work that I think our board has done in ushering the investments towards things that are actually going to yield student achievement. So I'm really proud of this board for doing that and, and for investing in our students. And so I, it's just a consternation that I have. And again, just being a small business owner myself, I know the impact here. I don't even own our facilities yet. We pay the taxes on them because we're, we're here at the former Norton Air Force Base, and we pay the taxes on these. And I can't, I don't even know how they would assess the value of a rocket-engine test facility that we created. I don't know, I don't know how they would do that, but that's neither here nor there. I'm happy to pay my fair share of taxes, and I've never, never obfuscated that responsibility, especially when it goes to our, to our community. So I'm just, I'm just torn. And, you know, people want to make this a partisan issue. To me, it's not a partisan issue at all. You know, it's what's in the best interest of our community. I think it's in the best interest of our community to see the state of California fully fund our schools. Yet I also think it's in the best interest of our community to see that our small businesses thrive and are able to provide job opportunities to our residents. So there's, there's kind of where I sit. So I'm a little bit ambivalent, and I understand us wanting to get additional tax base and, and revenue to our schools. We desperately need it. I'm not arguing that at all. It's just the, it's just the cost potential to our residents and small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Wallace Medina?
No, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, when we look at who is supporting this, we have our teachers supporting this, we have small businesses supporting this, we have many, many of those that work within, you know, the fire department will be benefiting from this, also supports it. And so you look at the different entities that are definitely feel and see that there is a need with this Proposition 15, and it benefits honestly, commercial and industrial companies. It benefits them to stay within Prop 13 because that's where they benefit the control. And the reality is, is that there's many corporations currently right now that are paying, paying their fair share. And it's not fair that they are paying their fair share while there's these entities, as, as public comments mentioned, that they're not paying their fair share and actually paying less than residences themselves. that they're not paying their fair share and actually paying less than residences themselves. And so we have to look at that as well. And I'm full support of this because it is supported by our community here and community throughout the state. So I think that is equally valuable, and our small businesses are also supporting this because this will help them pay less. Finally, a moment of a proposition that will support our small businesses in paying no property taxes on actual items and, of course, less on property value.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Mr. Tillman?
Yes, and, you know, I actually think Proposition 15 strikes a good balance. I'm old enough to remember when I was working at the county in 1980, and when Prop 13 went into effect, we had this massive layoff. And prior to Prop 13, we, I mean, when I went to Valley College, it was actually free. You pay $7 for your, it was a health fee, and that was the only cost. And it was, and you had a lot more people that got an education because of that. But remember, at the time of Prop 13, what they ran on was that there were a lot of elderly people that were being taxed out of their homes because the property tax on their property was going up so high that you had people who couldn't afford to stay in their home that they had paid for because the tax was so, had increased so much. So this actually, I think, strikes a balance because it ensures that homeowners do not have to, are not going to see their property taxes increase. So you won't have an instance where someone's been in their house for 40 years and all of a sudden can't afford to live there anymore. But it will bring back some of the revenues from the businesses that can more readily afford it. I mean, California is the richest state in the country, the sixth-largest economy in the world, and I really think that there should be some more funding for education. And I think this is a good way of doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to share that I have been studying Prop 15 and listening to the commentators, and some person, I don't know who it was, did an excellent job explaining everything. It's almost like anything else, who gets the information out first? You know, there's a tendency to kind of follow that. I was concerned, very concerned with Prop 15 as far as small businesses concerned. But the people on the media, when they're showing these small businesses, I gather they aren't going to be affected at all. So I know, I know there's a big need out there. We have, in this state, we have just ignored our schools, you know, being from back east and going back often. And just seeing the schools and what they're doing, I mean, it's almost different at night and day with some of our schools in California and certainly in San Bernardino. And this is an opportunity for us to show our students how proud, how proud we are of them, and they should be proud of us because we're giving them the place to be away from home. So, you know, for that reason, I hear both sides, but the side that I will support is supporting Prop 15. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill, and Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Madam President, and, you know, I've heard a lot of great comments from the public as well as my colleagues. And, you know, I'd have to agree that I think it's interesting when folks want to make this a partisan issue when it clearly is not. You know, I've been an educator for over 20 years, and that's the profession I've chosen to do as well as be on the school board. And if you look at my voting record, you'll definitely see that I absolutely support education. This particular proposition, obviously, is one that's going to be very controversial, probably the most controversial on the ballot at this time. But, you know, I learned a long time ago in my doctoral studies, and this was probably about back in 2008 when I studied this, that, you know, larger corporations, they don't pay their fair share. Let's just be honest. I think everybody knows that. It's not a secret. And if they did, could you imagine what we could do with those funds? Now, obviously, there is a concern in how this will impact our small businesses. I think that's probably one of the biggest concerns for all of us is, will it hit them, and will it hit them hard? I hope not, because we know that the increase in taxes will, of course, pass on the cost to us as a consumer. But I don't see there's any way how I couldn't support this Proposition 15 because of being an educator, number one, and working in education and being a board member. You know, we are the lowest-funded, or one of the lowest-funded states in the country, which is hard to believe when we're supposedly the wealthiest state in our nation. So I believe that there's plenty to go around, especially from the larger corporations who make a tremendous amount of money. And if they pay their fair share, it could benefit us all. So I'm definitely in support of this, and I will continue to stand my ground on my stance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. And based on the information that I'm hearing, it sounds like our board is in support. I will add as well, I've heard and talked and received information about Prop 15 quite some time ago. And I've said before, our school districts need funding. We're in the business of supporting students, and when we're in the business of supporting students, we're looking for how we can allow them to have that world-class education that's needed, and it does require funding. However, it also says that we hold those accountable to do what they say they're going to do, just like we are legislators. If we're saying we're going to do something and we see that it's going down a different road, we want our constituents to hold us accountable. So as we move forward with Proposition 15, I am hearing that it should read, "Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District, having studied the various elements of the potential impacts of the California Schools and Local Community Funding Act of 2020, supports Proposition 15." At this time, I'm going to call for the vote. If there's no further discussion. Dr. Flores?
Yes, I.
Dr. Hill?
I.
Dr. Wyatt?
I.
Mr. Gallo?
I wish I could come out in support, full support of this, but and I really don't want to come out against it either because I know we desperately need these dollars, so I'm going to abstain.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
I.
Mr. Tillman?
I.
Gwen Rogers?
I.
Motion carried. Thank you all so much. I am sure our community was able to hear some more good information as we promised. This is our policy. When we're looking at proposition, to make sure we study it and we give them the information that they need to be informed. And I thank you all tonight for joining us for this special board. Yes, sir.
Can I ask that, are we in all our meetings at this time?
If you probably want to say anything. So we are going to move forth into 5.1?
Move to turn.
Move to turn. All right. Thank you so much, board members. We will see you at our next board meeting. Have a great time, and don't forget to vote. God bless and have a good night.